Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Millbrae Planning Commission meeting this evening. It is remote via Zoom webinar. Important notice of the August 17th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N 29-20 dated March 17, 2020. By order of the Health Officer of the San Mateo County directing all individuals living in the county to shelter in their place of residence. The governor has allowed local legislative bodies to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body or state body to avoid public gatherings and has suspended all contrary provisions of the Brandon. This meeting will be via video conferencing only and can be watched in real time on the Millbrae Community Television Cable, Channel 27, or on www.mctv.tv. The public cannot come to the Millbrae Council Chambers to join this meeting as this is a remote meeting with no public location. To maximize time, the public comment. Members of the public are encouraged to provide comments by joining the city council meeting via Zoom for web. Be visit slash select, join a meeting and enter meeting ID number 88094216501. And the password is 087157. Please use the raise hand feature to request to speak. For dial-in comments, please call 1 Enter the meeting ID 88094216501 and the password 087157 to speak. All public comments are subject to a three-minute time limit unless authorized or determined by myself, the planning chair. I would like to call this meeting to order this evening. Welcome to everyone, and at this point, I would like everyone to stand for the flag, to the flag for our a lead pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the Republic, which is standing. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chairperson Quick.
Present.
Vice Chair Joe.
Present.
Commissioner Feng.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Everybody's here and accounted for.
Okay, and everyone has a copy of the agenda for this evening. Are there any changes or changes to the agenda for this evening? Seeing none. We will do, and are there any staff updates? No, no staff update. The minutes for this evening, we are going to have a resubmital of the minutes of 5:18, 2020. Everyone has that in front of them, and I'd like comments, please, for approval or
Waiting.
Waiting.
Motion to approve.
Oh, thank you.
Motion to approve May 18, 2020, meeting minutes.
And can I make a comment?
Yes.
This is Jean. I am the one who asked for the resubmital, and I would say it is shorter. But I've still, I mean, it's basically like lots of lines and paragraphs like a, like a narrative, and I would have preferred, especially for something like the, what do you call it, this Anton Development Project, to have like bullet points of the things that we really felt as a commission, the comments for, you know, for the future. So rather than just having like a dialogue style, narrative style, I think it would be more helpful for the future, or even like if we're going back to this in a year or months later, to be able to kind of go, oh, yeah, this, these are the, these are the comments that were really important and pertinent, and I don't know, I'm willing to let it go at this point because I don't want to keep being the one who keeps holding back the minutes. But I do feel like this one and June, so I won't speak again, that there, rather than having a kind of a narrative style or transcript style, just the main points of what, you know, the, the items that the commission wished for the developer to work on or to make sure to bring back to us later. So typically for the Anton Development, you know, there were things like, we wanted to make sure the transportation, you know, that the circulation plan was a little more clear. We wanted material board, so it's all in here, and people can read it, but I'm, I'm getting a little more cranky about reading small print. My eyes don't take it very well, and it just doesn't, it's not very, it's not easily helpful for the future, so I would make that comment. Having said that, I don't want to keep holding, I don't want to be, you know, waiting months to approve it. But I, and the information's there, but it's just not really what I would have preferred.
Right, I mean, I would concur that we can be a little bit more, what's the right word, be more effective, right? If we were to just, you know, sort of list out the bullet points of the discussions, what was being discussed, who raised that issues, and, you know, for some of the specific discussions and conversation that actually happened within the meeting, someone could easily go in to the video and be able to see all the details. But again, yeah, sorry, but then again, I think, you know, there's a lot to do within our planning department, and I'd like to kind of get this behind us. I think there are things that the staff could use their time on to really make, you know, there's a lot of tasks in front of them, so that's why I motion to just get it done.
On quick comment.
Yes.
If we could just as a group commit to the fact that we'd like action minutes rather than any kind of gory details like this and not even need to summarize presentations, they're all part of the public record, they're part of the packet that went out originally, so summarizing a staff presentation isn't necessary work that doesn't need to be done. So if we can all say action minutes, yay, then second to approve these, and next time we'll see something different in terms of format.
I concur with Commissioner Davis. I can appreciate Jean-Joe's comments. I felt the same way, but once again, let's go forward so that we can move forward and hopefully, I mean, we all feel the same way. So we have a motion from Anders Fun, and do we have a second?
I seconded it.
Maureen Davis is seconding the motion, and can I have votes, please? Can we take a verbal vote, please?
Chairman Quick.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Joe.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Feng.
Aye.
Five to zero to pass.
And that, we do have the next minutes also, so the minutes of the 18th and approved, and we have a motion to approve the minutes of June 15th. Oh, I did have a change on that one.
On the 15th, on June?
Okay. Anybody have anything to say? Otherwise, I will say something. Okay, my turn. Under discussion, under the public hearing, I might have said these words, but it's a little bit, I'd like to change them a little bit. When I am quoted, the more you build, the more, duh-duh. I would like with the commission consensus, the more, okay, the more you build, the more you lose valuable, permeable land, which is detrimental to the environment. So I might not have said it exactly that way, but that was my intention is the more we build, we are losing the ground, which is good for the environment. So if that's okay, I'd like to change those couple of words.
I'll make that change, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other changes or correction to those minutes?
Okay, I'll leave it alone. I, yeah. Sorry. I mean, I feel like, like Commissioner Davis mentioned, the project, the presentation didn't need to be in there, and even all the discussion and the wording of whatever Commissioner Quick didn't need to be there, literally the very end has the bullet points of the important stuff, and that's all really that needed to be in there, and, you know, I know, I'm the one who's like, action minutes, I like, but I also like having a little bit of the behind, why behind in action sometimes? So I guess maybe I'm the one who's caused all this problem, but I just think a lot of this discussion kind of back and forth wasn't really needed, and then even for, you know, nomination and election of the chair and vice chair, all the detail of that didn't really need to go in there, so again, I won't hold it back, but just my, I don't know, just my comments on that.
That being said, who is making the motion to approve? Motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the June 15th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Thank you, and second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, and your votes, please.
Here, Quick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Joe.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Feng.
Aye.
That's five to zero to approve with the change.
Thank you very much. Our next item is public communication, and this is, if there is anyone, the audience that wishes to address the Planning Commission on an item that is not on the agenda. Did you receive any public communication? Since there is no public.
We have three members of the public that's joining us via Zoom tonight. If anybody in the public would like to speak on the item, on anything that's not on the agenda, please use the raise hand feature, and we can promote you to speak via video. So we give a few, few seconds for anyone? Okay, it looks like we don't have anyone that wants to speak on the public comment section.
I do not see anybody, Roscoe, on my panel.
Okay. We have no items on the consent calendar. Therefore, we were moving right around along to public hearing 8A, and that is the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan Land Use Regulations Amendment. Amendment to Table 5.1, permitted and conditionally permitted land uses of the 2016 Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan to allow with a conditional use permit biotechnology, scientific labs, tech biotech product assembly, and tech biotech component manufacturing uses in the TOD overlay zone portion south of Millbrae Avenue. This is a public hearing, and it looks like staff is Nestor.
Thank you, Chair Quick. Let me just share my screen here quick, and it's showing up for you guys, right?
Good, good.
Yeah, so this item we have before us today, a public hearing, it's a text amendment to the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. Just let me just put this full screen, there we go. To give a quick bit of background, the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, the MSASP, was last updated in 2016, January 2016, with the city council. They adopted it. It's a plan that's specific to the Millbrae Station area. It's meant to guide future development in that area, and it's through the creation of diverse zones, a mix of uses through, through five planning zones and one residential overlands. And here's just a boundary map that shows where the, where the station area is. This red building right here, over here, that's the Bart, excuse me, Bart Cartrain Station, and then the boundary line over there, that dashed red line, that's where the Millbrae Station area is. A bit more kind of background information, like I mentioned, it's divided into different mixed zones. The zones are the transit-oriented development zone, which we're going to be going into more detail of the TOD zone, that residential mixed-use zone, the employment center land industrial zone, the retail commercial zone, public facilities, and then the one overlay zone, which is the residential overlay zone. Each, each zone kind of allows its own specific number of uses, and that either conditional or by right, and that's in Table 5.1. Here's just a map of the different zones. You'll see that the TOD zone is this purple one that's just around the Millbrae Station area, right here. And then, as was mentioned by Chair Quick, the proposed amendment is, or the proposal today is an amendment to Table 5.1, permitted and conditionally permitted land uses to allow with a CUP biotechnology, scientific labs, tech and biotech product assembly, and tech biotech component manufacturing uses in the TOD zone specifically, the portion south of Millbrae Avenue, and related amendments to it. And this next up here, this shows the specific area that, that we're proposing the amendment for. So it's not the whole TOD zone, it's just that area that's just south of Millbrae Avenue there, that red circle. Uses that are currently permitted in the TOD zone, multifamily units with seven, seven or more units of multifamily dwellings, public and quasi-public space, commercial space, retail space, transportation, communication, and utilities, and then out of the light industrial uses, there's research and development that's allowed there as well. So it's a good mix of uses. Here's the existing Table 5.1, as it is in the, in the document that was approved in 2016. You'll notice at the bottom here, that's the light industrial section that has, and the corresponding TOD zone right here. If you go down on the table, you'll see that biotechnology, tech biotech, and tech biotech component manufacturing, they're all, you'll have this dashed line that means that they're not allowed currently in that zone. They are in the employment center, center line industrial zone over here, with the C meaning that they're allowed through a CUP, a conditional use permit process. And then this slide shows the proposed, proposed changes to the Table 5.1. Anything that's underlined and that, that sort of blue color, that's, that's something that's you text, and then the one with strike-through red, that means that it's, it's being deleted. You'll see here that then we're proposing to allow with a CUP and the TOD zone, the biotech scientific lab use, the tech biotech product assembly use, and then the tech biotech component manufacturing used there. This, the C meaning that it would have to go through a CUP process in that area. We also have some, some, some text amendment down here at one of the, two of the footnotes, actually. Footnote number four, which is existing, currently reads light industrial facilities and safety compatibility zone two of the AO UCP, which is the airport land use compatibility, wait, airport land use compatibility plan shall not include hazardous uses as defined by SFO AL, AL, UCP policy SP3 in pages 433 and 434. We're proposing to change that to then allow uses in safety zone two, which is where that TOD zone is, up to bio safety level, level two, which is why we have that blue text there. And then we're adding the, the footnote number six, which is specifying then the uses that would be allowed through a CUP process in, in the TOD zone. So yeah, proposed changes, kind of giving a bit more detail on, on, on the airport compatibility zone. The TOD zone is an airport land use compatibility zone two. And if we look, we go back to the map, you'll see here on these black kind of dashed lines, they show the, the different safety zones for the airport land use plan, and you'll see that TOD is in safety zone two. The proposed changes would allow light industrial facilities and safety zone two to include uses up to bio safety level two. Each biotech proposal would still, through the CUP process, would still go through environmental analysis, so, so any sort of hazardous use or bio safety level would still be kind of analyzed through, through the process by, by planning. Staff findings that we found that it's kind of why we're, we're proposing this, this amendment to the, to the MSASP. There's an increase in working from home, as we know, with the pandemic, meaning that there's less demand for office. We found that there is a demand for biotech along the peninsula, and we've actually had a few inquiries about biotech uses in the TOD zone, specifically on Adrian Road. Excuse me, and allowing the biotech use in, in the TOD zone specifically south of Millbrae Ave satisfied a few of the general plan goals from the city's general plan, whether it's environmental or land use goals. Biotech is also allowed just south of, of the TOD zone, that, that, that next zone over the employment center light industrial, if we go back, we can see it. So in this kind of darker blue zone, it's actually already allowed there through conditional use permit. So we would be proposing to have it be allowed here as well, through the same process. And staff lines that there's no significant environmental noise or otherwise impacts through the, through this amendment. There's no change to the actual development standards, being anything like for area or height or anything like that, it's just specific to the, to the use, to the land use allowed. Next steps, planning commission on our public hearing tonight would provide a recommendation to amend the MSASP to the city council. From there, the amendment would be submitted to, to the Airport Land Use Commission for a determination. And once we have the determination, then city, city staff would then take the amendment to the city council for consideration there, and then for final approval or otherwise. So with all that said, staff recommendations, staff recommends that the planning commission holds the public hearing and recommends that the city council amend Table 5.1, permitted and conditionally permitted land uses of the 2016 MSASP, allow with a CUP biotechnology, scientific labs, tech biotech product assembly, and tech biotech component manufacturing uses in the portion of TOD zone that is south of Millbrae Avenue, and the related amendments. Staff is available for any questions, and I believe our legal team is here as well if we have any questions for them about the process or anything else.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Do we have any commissioner questions for Nestor?
If I may, Chair Quick.
Yes. Seeing you, but yes.
Yeah, because you can unshare the screen, that way you can see everybody. Nestor. But a quick question there, is there any financial impact to this?
Um, I mean, one thing, one way we've kind of looked at it is that, that there's, with the, with the, not lack, but kind of less interest in office space use because of so much working from home at the moment. We wouldn't want kind of different, different parts of town to be left unused, and we found that there are, there are a few, I think Roscoe has spoken to them, potential applicants for biotech in, in that specific area at this point.
If I could add to that, these, these amendments would enhance the economic development goals of the city, be able to allow more employment in, within the city and provide more economic development benefits.
Right, so it sounds almost like this, this particular proposed changes stemmed from some sort of an inquiry or interest in using that location for those very specific uses?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things, so one is Nestor had mentioned, there is, we're, the, the objective of this amendment is to provide some flexibility with the code. And given this area south of Millbrae Avenue is, is is more conducive to light industrial rather than active retail, we feel that there should be some flexibility in this specific area. This is not to say that this, the only uses that are permitted would be biotech or R&amp;D, but it just gives a little bit more flexibility, so if another office company or tech company wants to locate in this, in this area, they would be able to do it under a code, but this just gives a little bit more options, and I think that, you know, given the, the, the high demand of biotech space in the peninsula, this would provide some sort of, some flexibility to allow that to be absorbed in this area. But to answer your question, commissioner, we, we did have received some inquiries from potential biotech uses, and in a while, there's nothing officially submitted yet, you know, there's still kind of seeing that's something that, that sounds important, and I think that these amendments would help to kind of facilitate those developments.
Hmm, so this is, is it true that this is staff initiated rather than an applicant initiated?
These amendments are staff initiated. We don't have an application from a developer for these amendments.
I see. Okay, well, let's see what the public has to say first, and we're out of commissioner, and then we'll come back to that. Thank you.
Hey, I have a question. This is Jean.
I can hear you.
If I may, oh.
Yes, I had to unmute myself.
Thank you. You mentioned in the presentation, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned several times that if this is only for the areas south of, south of the Millbrae Avenue, is there something in the writing of the amendment that specifies that? Or are we just assuming that we, you know, when the conditional use permit comes in, we would just kind of know that that would be specific to it? So I, I tried reading through it a few times, but I didn't catch that, so. Is there something in here?
So it would be on this, on the footnote number six, it would specify right here, biotech scientific labs, tech biotech product assembly and tech biotech.
Thank you. Okay, so that would be, that would be clear. Okay, got it. I'm good then, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Question? Question? Quick. So when we talk about light industrial use, now what is the, what do we envision the limitation on, say, square footage or height, or how big is the facility?
I would have to go back in the MSASP and, and look specifically for that question. I don't know if Roscoe has a better idea at this point than I do. Uh I would have to go back in the MSASP and, and, and look specifically for that question. I don't know if Roscoe has a better idea um at this point than I do.
Because there's a big difference if there would be like single level, small scale facility versus some enormous production facility with manufacturing and. Production labs and laboratory chemicals and so forth.
I could answer that question. Uh so the, the, we're not proposing any changes to the height or the, or area uh in this proposal. In the MSASP, uh this portion of the TOD south of Millray Avenue. And north of Adrian Road, the height is, and as indicated in the plan is ninety feet to hundred feet. So um yeah, those are the maximum height limits. So again, we're not changing any for area or height limits right now. It's really just the use of the land.
And then also that area is right across Millray Avenue from the. Uh Gateway Project. And so the Gateway Project had the one primary entrance on Rollins Road. And then a secondary egress through the back by the railroad tracks. Is there a way that we would be able to make sure that any facility or development there can retain? That second egress from the gateway development? So if there's emergencies or people need to leave the facility, would there still be that circulation? Loop for people to exit gateway through that?
We're not proposing any changes to the circulation uh under this amendment. So everything would still be the same.
Okay, so that one, there's that one road that comes down south, makes it along the BART station tracks. I think we're familiar with it. It goes under the overpass. And then comes out along that one street south of the purple area. So. Uh I envision that if there was a large enough. Proposal to develop that entire area. Uh I would, I would suggest that we would still want to maintain either that road or a different alignment so that people can exit through there. From the Gateway Project and then out back to Rollins Road.
We. We can take a look at that on a project by project basis. Um uh we'll have to do a little bit more analysis um to see uh what would work best. Um but right now what's being proposed, there, there's any change, was changed to the um circulation, uh the existing plan.
Okay, so those are just a couple of clarifications. Uh I'll hold the rest for discussion.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to make a comment or a question? On this project? Okay, there being none. See any other ones. So that being said, um. Do we have a motion that?
Is there public comment on this or no?
Oh, right. It is a public. Is there any public comment, Mr. Malta?
Uh there are a few people who are joining us today. Looks like there's four. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature so that we can promote you into the, um to the meeting and you could speak.
But I see that also.
Uh yes, you should as well. Um I'm not seeing any currently. So I think we can um proceed. I think there's no, there's no comment. For the item, Chair.
For the chair. Okay, thank you. Are there, is there, it is a public comment. Um it is, it is a public hearing. Uh therefore, do we have consensus to close the public comment portion of this meeting?
Yeah, if nobody wants to speak on behalf of this project, I motion to close public comments.
Yes, okay. That being said, uh is there any discussion amongst us on this amendment?
I'll start, I guess, Jean.
There is a second to the motion to close public comments and a vote?
Do we need a second? I think it's just a consensus. We can just close it. Yeah.
Agree.
Yeah, so.
Jared, well, I think it's just a consensus. Is that right?
I agree to close my comment, yes.
Okay. Okay, please, Commissioner Joe.
Okay, um I was gonna just say that I think, you know, we're not, we're not talking about a specific project. This is just to allow for a CUP so that a project can come before us. And then we'll discuss the merits of it. Um in the process of looking for an office, I actually saw. That's a set of buildings right in that area that has been vacant for at least a year or more. Um because as, and so as staff is saying, you know, it's good to have, you know, invite companies in. It's good to have they not have vacant buildings. And I think having the flexibility to, you know, have more uses is great. And, you know, one of our strengths in the Bay Area is biotech. And so having some more in Millbury, I think is not a bad thing. So I, I'm all for it. It's my comment.
Do you, uh would you like to make a motion?
Oh, are we ready to make?
Well, you want to let everybody have a chance to speak, Chair Quaid?
I'll go next.
Right?
Okay?
Ashna Davis.
Sure. Um I, I basically agree with Jean. You know, flexibility is always a good thing, but in our pandemic times now. It's probably even more important that we offer some flexibility in that zone. And um. If a biotech company were to move in some small portion of their operations there, it could also be a toehold for them to later occupy some of the bigger office spaces in the TOD projects that are already approved. So that might be a really good thing as well. So. Sounds good.
Any other comments? Commissioner Feng.
Thank you, Chair. Um. I agree fundamentally that we need flexibility. I also would welcome more biotechnology as well as technology company. Into our city and the premise of the MSASP is precisely to invite that. Uh bringing these businesses into our city. Um so, you know, there are three components to this change of the land use destination. And the first one is. Well, let me just say it's um. To allow for conditional use permit biotechnology scientific labs. I think that's quite okay. Uh tech and biotech product assembly and tech slash biotech component manufacturing. Uh that I'm a little concerned about, you know, turning that into even more industrial use. Um I, as, as far as vision goes. Perhaps I should ask the question first. Is there a? Breakdown or percentage based on this destination? That you would allow office space versus product assembly? And how deep of a component manufacturing are we going to allow it? Um and whether or not, you know, certain types of environmental study would be triggered or required if someone would actually propose. To have an assembly line with manufacturing facility right here in Millbrae, in the TOD zone.
Uh we.
That sounds like it's more for staff.
Yes, yes, it is.
Happy to answer that question, Commissioner Feng. We, um one of the reasons, one of the benefits of allowing this with the conditional use permit is that um each type of project development. Is a little bit different. So depending on the type of um. Tenant that's proposing to occupy the space. The, the demands for office space versus, you know, which, which areas of the. Office building are devoted to manufacturing uses. That's going to change. It's going to vary um between users. So. Uh what we're posing is that the condition use permit um evaluate those specifics. So we have um. Tenant that has predominantly product assembly, for example, and that may not be something that we want to. Um to heavily promote, um we could look at that on a project by project basis. Um right now, uh our code does not specify how much um. What that threshold is in terms of what is the office.
Percentage wise, meaning?
Yeah, correct.
Right. Do we want to have anything like that at all in the code? Just to, as a safeguard? I see some head being shaken there, but. Have we had, okay, let's, let's just back up a moment there. Right?
Okay.
It's just back of a moment there. Was there any discussions at all? In terms of, uh what are not even feasible to have any of that in the code? Or should it just left be? A conditional use permit discussion should and when that application comes in?
I, I.
Mr. Malta.
Um we, we could, um and I think what generally is a practice with staff is, um is. Telling applicants is that, you know, if, if we have biotech use and if you have lab space, um we, we don't want that. The entire building is just a lab. Um we want to see some sort of uh office component. Um and, and kind of that, that threshold informally has been around thirty to forty percent office.
Okay.
And a lot of it is driven by, uh yeah, I, I, I would hesitate to, to recommend um a, a higher threshold. Um in the sense of that, you know, these biotech users, a lot of their, their um. Business is, is lab and research. So um it might be a little challenging to attract the quality tenant that might need a lot of more lab space. Um so we really didn't want to satisfy.
The lab space I have no problem with. Yeah. Lab space I have no problem with. I'm just a little concerned about the manufacturing part of it and. How much of that being a component manufacturing uses and um. You know, I, I, I don't know about everybody else, but I like to see Millbrae move away from the industrial use, especially in those area. And I do understand. You know, to the extent that a portion of that land being uh used for manufacturing would be easier. To attract a quality tenant. And I do want to make sure that we do have a quality tenant coming in at some point sooner rather than later. And so um I was just wondering if, I, I just want to be mindful. That, you know, I, you know, and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be going public record to say that I would. Prefer to see this land being used for its highest and best use, right, from a tax revenue generation perspective? So being a complete hundred percent component manufacturing use on that location may not be something I personally would like to see.
And we can evaluate that on project by project basis, understood?
Okay, all right.
I think because of the fact that it is a conditional use permit. It allows staff and everyone to look at project by project by project that's been applied for. And the vision is. And, and we have a vision, therefore, let's look at the vision and staff will. Be reviewing these conditional use permits to fit in with our vision. So I, I, I wouldn't have any problem, but I see that um Commissioner Wong has a question or comment?
Uh yes, uh Commissioner Feng is done. I'll add some comments.
Yes, please.
Um. Biotech right now is hot, right? Uh we're going through this pandemic. There's some companies that are getting major funding. Not only uh for their investments for research into uh antivirus and virus testing and so forth, but uh, you know, tech is booming. We see that in South San Francisco. I've heard that there's a lot of spillover so that uh that's why we're being approached from uh high tech or biotech industries. They're looking for spaces up in Brisbane, all the way down to here. And so there's, I guess, a lot of, uh plenty of. Opportunities for developments and for companies to attract businesses here at that, that location. Uh one thing I am concerned about is uh first and foremost is just safety and how that fits in with our TOD development. Because we do have this vision now of uh high residential housing and commercial development right there at the BART station. And uh I think we're expecting there to be, you know, community neighborhood, a great place to live. And how will those neighbors and how would the valuation of those properties be if we have all send industry right next door? Even if it's a small light industry, uh but what, what if there's uh chemical deliveries or? There's talk about some testing for viruses or uh pathogens going on in the laboratory or testing of animals. You know, how would the neighbors feel? Uh it, it is in the industrial, more industrial area across from the. BART station tracks in that area was originally most likely, you know, all the businesses up and down. Rollins Road, there, there's no housing there yet. So there is commerce, there is light industry. But again, that I think, uh, you know, we need to be conscientious of not only the future neighbors that will be there. But also the neighbors that are here in our city. I hate to go to extreme mentioning, but at some point it may be raised, like in Wuhan, China, there's a lot of accusations that there was a. Bio lab right next to the night market and that they were testing SARS and uh, you know, treatment for, for SARS. And that's where people accuse the COVID originating from next to a bio facility right next to. The night market, which is a market for selling food and so forth. Uh so we need to be conscious about uh how people view this, uh conscious of safety, you know, making sure that we have. Regulations and inspectors that are available to uh regulate facility. I mean, if the facility can demonstrate that they're safe and they're, you know, uh take safety precautions and they're good for the, the community. And that there's no harm or hazard to the, to the community. Uh you know, we need to think of things not only for the bio safety degree, but also making sure that there's limited chemical storage on site, no explosive hazards. Uh you know, if they, again, if uh they are checking in canisters of chemicals for their production facility or testing or research. You know, we need to make sure that there's safety plans. And then I think uh in talking with some of the neighbors who are in biotech industry, uh they said that BSL two should. Provide a fairly good degree of safety. The extreme BSL four. Would be such that you're testing on a virus or a disease that has no known cure. So that, that would be very risky or at a high extreme degree of risk. We're limiting this to BSL two. So I think staff is conscious of trying to limit these bio safety hazards. And then also the key for. Um safety is making sure that their discharges are handled safely. Those discharges are likely to go to the wastewater treatment plant just right across the street down the road, Millray Avenue. And that the inspectors for the treatment facility would have to periodically go in. And inspect the facility, making sure that their discharges are safe, uh making sure chemical storage and safety is within. Uh their, their agreeable uh storage. And that, uh you know, there's chemical hygiene plans for safety, that uh everything is disclosed, all the facilities. Chemicals are listed and given to the fire department uh so that the, there's full disclosure and that there's. You know, emergency responders would know what to do. So, so given all of that. I think it would really um be up to the applicants. To demonstrate and prove that the facility is managed well and it's safe. One of the, the other last, one of the last things also is that with the, the biotech industry being hot. Is that, you know, a lot of companies start up and then they get tech money and then they thrive, but then they uh, you know, go by the wayside. So, you know, any facility or company that comes in, we're hoping there could be some longer term stability. And so they're not just there for two years and then gone. So it's good to have these, point out these items of discussion or just raise these points. Uh just to make sure we're thorough and recovering any concerns that the community might have. My overriding principle for this TOD project is how does it fit in with our originally envisioned TOD area? You know, how does it make the community safer, better? You know, how does it make the community safer, better, livelier? A place where all those residents at the bar station would want to go. I see that, uh, you know, the In-N-Out Burger, uh. Location has restaurants, shopping, retail, uh, if there could be more community activities and, uh. Establishments or even, uh, places to work where there's a lot more, uh, office corporate structure where a lot more. Can hold a lot more, um, office, office space, uh, I think that would even be more ideal, but, uh. Again. You know, uh, I don't want to restrict anything at this point because, you know, we could be open to all ideas and not limit ourselves at this point.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, once again, this, uh, use will be. Has to be approved with conditional use permit. So I think we, all of your comments are very well taken. I'm sure something comes to us i- in the near future, will we remember to. Ask these questions and make sure they all fit in. So I appreciate all your comments. Uh, are there any other comments or do we have a, a motion? Uh, to, um, move this, approve the specific plan amendment. So that it can be, um, moved up, uh, to the next level.
I got one more quick question, if you don't mind, sorry.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, hi, uh, this perhaps for either, uh, Mr. Malter or, um, or counsel. I see the, um. Legal counsel, um, depending on what application comes before, should this amendment goes through. Um, if a heavy component of manufacturing were to come before us in terms of an application with that trigger EIR? Depending on what they propose?
Uh, not necessarily, um, the, we would have to go through initial study first. In order to determine if there are any potential significant impacts as a result of, um, that particular use. Um, it might rise to that level, but, um, we would have to, to, to evaluate that.
But not likely, it's your word.
Um, it's, we're unable to determine, make an, give you an answer right now because we need to know the specifics of, of what that use is going to be. Um, and there's this checklist of, um, secret has a checklist of items that we have to evaluate and then, um, based on, um, significance thresholds. For the different, um, um, components, then, you know, if it rises to that level, it might be able to be mitigated. If it's not, then we'd have to do an EAR, so.
That, uh, the, the big picture answer to the question is that, that, and a, a project would be evaluated. Uh, would receive some, some level of environmental review, the level of environmental review would deter, would depend on the nature of the project. And, um, and its consistency with the, uh, with the various aspects of the specific plan. Um, but they, there would be some level of environmental review of, uh, an, an application.
Okay, thank you.
So just, uh, if, this is Jane, if I may, um, so we're not passing this amendment. We're just providing a recommendation to city council, then it goes to land use and then it goes to city council. So it's not something that we would do, so I guess we motion to rec. If I wanted to do this, I would motion to recommend the proposed.
Well, um, exactly, that's what I said, to move it forward to the, because we are only recommending.
Okay.
At the beginning, he, he mentioned all the exact steps, man, so I would, uh, uh. Welcome a motion, uh.
I, I make that motion to recommend, uh, to the city council for this amendment to be, uh, take place. As per the staff, um, report, conditions and whatever findings in the resolution.
Thank you.
I second it.
So we have a, a first and a second to move, um, uh, we have. Recommended this to move forward so that we can get a final change to the amendment. So, um, may, we have your votes, please, and if we can have staff, please take a verbal vote.
Chair Quigg?
Yep.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Aye, that's five to zero in favor.
Thank you very much, um. The next item is actually a new business item and it is the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. Images update, and this is basically a study session this evening. To receive input on an amendment to the twenty sixteen Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. To replace and update select images. So if we can have, um, I believe it's Roscoe again, I, I mean, I'm sorry, I believe it's Nestor again.
Yeah, it is. Thank you, Chair Quigg, um, yes, this item is a study session for, uh, images. An image amendment to the MSASP as well. So a bit of quick, it's kind of saying the same thing, but it was adopted back in twenty sixteen, the MSASP. Uh, it's meant to guide the future developments in the areas surrounding Millbrae Station. Um, we found that several developers tried to emulate designs of buildings that were in the M A, MSASP document. Um, and some of these buildings were kind of in the background on certain images, so they weren't really meant to be there to, to provide design direction. Um, they maybe meant to, to showcase landscaping or something else. Uh, there's sixteen images that could be replaced by images that are more in line with, with Millbrae's vision of, of development for the future. Um, staff researched, uh, alternate images and compiled a, a list of, uh, suggested replacements. Um, so we have at least three replacement images for each, um, existing image. Um, and during the study session, we'd like to receive input from the planning commission, um, and maybe have, uh, kind of the two favored, favored. Um, replacement suggestions for each existing image. Um, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna go through each kind of existing image. Um, and then kind of provide what, what we're looking for in, in the replacement image and, and provide the examples from there. Um, and then maybe the planning commission can discuss after each specific image, uh, let's say the first one's a document cover page. Uh, the preferred ones, and then we'll move on to, on to the next image, so on and so. Um, so the first image to be replaced, uh, this is the document cover page. Uh, this is the existing image, the purpose of the image represents the type of development that the city would like in the, uh, Millbrae Station area. Uh, so the image, this image here, this one's the one that's existing on the cover of the, of the MSASP. Um, for a proposed image, staff feels a proposed alternate images, um, that we're gonna show fit their architectural vision. Um, of Millbrae, of the Millbrae Station area better than, than the existing image. Go through the, through the different, um, proposed images that we found. This is image A. And these are all part of your, um, the attachments on, on the, um, staff report as well. Uh, image B. Image C. Image D, which is actually, um, here in Millbrae, close, close to the, in the, in the station area, actually, Ano Camino. Image E. Then I believe we had, we have one more local example, which is image F. So those are the, the proposed images that staff found that they recommend, that we recommend for, um, to replace the existing image. And we kind of like to get, get the planning commission's thoughts on the images and, and, um, see if we can get, uh, maybe the two, two favorite images. From, from the list that we have.
If I could, um, uh, chime in here, perhaps what we could do is we could just go through the, um. The images that we're proposing to replace and then the proposals and then maybe, um, open up to public hearing if anybody wants to comment. And then, um, we could probably just to kind of come back and, um. Discuss each one in particular.
Sure.
Does that?
I, I have a quick comment on that, um. The one that is in place, it's a much smaller project than all of our examples here. That being said, it's kind of hard to, for me, it's kind of hard to say. This one is better, that one is better because we're looking at two different sizes. I think when we did approve Pindara, um. And it's a small project, Pindara, all of these are much larger, uh, so I'd like somebody else's comments on that.
Chair, if I could make, uh, a suggestion, would you think it's better to, just to go through with these, um, individually, one by one? And then, um, uh, or just to have staff present them all at once and then kind of come back and discuss them?
Uh, personally, I think we should probably look at each one because there's an awful lot of them. And each one that you're showing us, I mean, we're looking at about sixty pages. So there's a lot of ABCs and Ds.
Hmm.
Um. I'm, I'm welcoming any other commissioner comments on this because, um. To me, it was a little bit overwhelming, uh, when we went through all of it because they're all quite nice. Uh, and so I kind of needed some direction also.
Commissioner Davis. Comment, um, Roscoe, your point about there, we need to have an opportunity for public comment on this. I think it, it's a good idea for us to just quickly understand what each collection of pictures is trying to do from the staff's presentation. And then we can go through the, each one, one by one, after the public has a chance to make comments.
Okay, alright.
By the public, you mean?
The. Yeah, speaker, yeah. If anybody has anything to say, at least let them have a shot at it before we get deep into it.
Okay. If that's, if, if, uh, Chair Quigg, if you're.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, are you okay with that? Okay.
So then go through, through the, through the, let's say the whole set of them and then public comments, if we have it, and then kind of go back to each one, is that?
Yeah.
Right, right, cool. Alright, so, uh, we'll move along to, um, the second image, um, that's existing, uh, this one is a network of public open spaces. Uh, it's on page three point four, uh, the purpose of the image is to show public open space that's, that's accessible, uh, to both residents and, uh, non-residents alike. Um, and staff believes, the beliefs of the alternate, alternates below show architecture on scale, uh, that's in line with, with the, uh, city's, uh. Future developments in the area. This one is, uh, image A. Image B. Proposed image C. And then the last one, a proposed image D for the network of public open spaces. So moving on to the third, um, image, the existing image for a building step back, uh, from page three point five. Um, the image, the purpose of the image is to convey the step back of the upper story, um, and have a defined, uh, ground floor. And this one, here's the existing, uh, image on page three point five. Um, for the proposed images, uh, the below image just depicts, uh, high-quality buildings with a pro- proper, um, upper story step back. And this is proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. And a proposed image D. Then, uh, moving on to the fourth image that's in the document, um, it's landscaping, landscaping with drought tolerant plants. Um, purpose of the image, the exhibits the need for both private and public entities, uh, to read to a sustainable urban environment. Um, and this is the image that's existing in the document in page three point five. Uh, the proposed alternate images, staff feels that show, uh, more neighborhood scale examples, um, with developments that are more appropriate to Millbrae. This is proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. I believe that's it for that one, yes. And then, uh, so the next existing image, as to, the image that shows, uh. Accommodating an, an appropriate amount of regular parking, um, and this is the existing image from page four point. Um, and purpose of the image is to show supply of parking in the Millbrae Station area. Um, and you see, you can see this is the, the proposed, or the existing image that's in the document. Uh, proposed image, the, the proposed images show, um, available parking that's a screen from view. It's not as visible from, from, uh, from this walk or street. This is proposed image A, you'll see parking here on the left. Proposed image B. And then proposed image C. And then our next, um, existing image in the document is for street-based front, fronted standards. Um, on page five point one, five point eleven, a pur- purpose of the image is to define grand, grand presence. Um, through building setbacks and sidewalk width, and this is the existing image here on page five point eleven. The proposed images, um, these images show building step, setbacks that allow for wider sidewalks or having inactive, uh, street frontage. Um, that engages pedestrians. This is proposed, proposed image A. Proposed image B. Post image C. And here's proposed image D. Our next, um, existing image in the documents is for usable open space, uh, publicly accessible open space. Um, it's from page five point one six of the MSASP. Um, the purpose of the image, it can base open space that's usable by both, uh, residents and visitors. And here's the, the image that's existing in page five point one six. Uh, the proposed images show usable open space with development architecture that's, that's more in line with the, the Millbrae, the MSASP, uh, vision. This is proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. Proposed image D. And proposed image E. Our next, um, existing image is the cover for chapter six. Um, chapter six is private development design standards and guidelines. The proposed images show, um, architectural style that conforms more to the, to the vision of the, of Millbrae and the MSASP. And here's, uh, proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. Proposed image D. Proposed image E. Proposed image F. This one's a more modern proposed image G. And another more modern sample, um, proposed image H. Moving along to, um, the ninth image from page six point three for gateway design, gateway design, this is the existing image here. Um, purpose of the image is to create prominent gateway, um, gateway feel along Millbrae and El Camino Real, um, through, through careful design. Specifically of the corner. Um, so the proposed images, the, the series of regional, these are gonna be regional temples, provide, um, high-quality corner treatment with, um, also high-quality. Architectural, um, style. And here's, uh, proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. Proposed image D. Proposed image E. And then I believe this last one promotes, proposed image. Image number ten, it's for building design, specifically building. Image number 10, it's for building design, specifically building articulation and massing. It's from page 6.7. And the purpose of the image is to promote design of high-quality buildings through massing, articulation and architectural detail. And this is the image from page 6.7. For the proposed images for, for this section, the alternate images show good examples of building articulation and massing. That's more appropriate to, to Millbrae and scale. This is proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. Proposed image D. Proposed image E. Proposed image F. Proposed image G. Proposed image H. Post image I. Our next existing image is for window arrangements. It's from page 6.8. The purpose of the image shows how windows can be designed and placed to create architectural detail. And this is the existing image from, again, page 6.8. The proposed image is for window arrangements. They show examples of windows assigned and placed to contribute to the building's architectural character. And here's proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. And then proposed image D. 12 image that's existing in the MSASP is for sustainable building design. It's from page 6.9 and the purpose of the image shows sunlight access that should be taken into consideration for the location of buildings. And this is the existing image on page 6.9. The proposed images show, show multifamily developments, designing a style suited to Millbrae that have solar access or use solar panels for energy efficiency. Here's proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. And proposed image D. Our 13th image that's existing in the MSASP is for vehicular driveway design. It's on page 6.9 as well. The purpose of the image shows vehicle access and driveways to be prohibited on Millbrae Ave. El Camino, that they should be, should be located on the, on the side streets, not on, not on Millbrae Ave or El Camino. The proposed images show a series of local, regional examples that show parking on, on the side streets. So here's proposed image A. Proposed image B. And then a proposed image C. 14th image existing in the MSASP, it's on page 6.12. And it's onsite landscaping. Purpose of the image is it conveys landscaping and how it can be used to define development, spatial organization, add aesthetics and create kind of entry, entry points. The development, here's the image from, that's existing on page 6.12. The proposed image for onsite landscaping, visual landscaping around development with an architecture and scale that conforms more with the MSASP vision. Here's proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. And proposed image D. 15th image in the existing in the MSASP, it's for fixed bus route service. It's on page 7.7 and it shows the, the ECR bus route that travels through Millbrae. Here's the existing image. And then the proposed images show fixed bus services by Millbrae Station and other high-quality developments. This is proposed image A. Proposed image B. And proposed image C. Our 16th and final image that's in the MSASP, it's for transportation demand management, found on page 7.13. And it's, it's meant to show, the purpose of the image is to show alternate modes of transport. Here's the existing image that's on the, on the document. And then the, the proposed images show Millbrae Station and the different modes of transport that's, that it supports. Here's proposed image A. Proposed image B. Proposed image C. And proposed image D. Next steps, once we have kind of the, the feedback and, and thoughts from the planning commission, we take the preferred images and present them to city council at a future study session. And that, I believe, is the end, yeah, of the presentation. I, I think you're on mute, Chuck, wait.
So, do you, would you, first of all, are there any comments, Steph? From the commissions? Are there any comments or questions, Steph?
Miss Quick, Miss Quick. So, if I may.
Oh, okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this seems like it's for informational only, so we're not actually taking action tonight, is that right, Nestor?
Uh, we'd like to get your feedback on, on, sorry.
I, to me, it's, you want feedback on each one.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so we are picking each and, you know, based on each and every one of the changes that you propose to make. You want us to give you a recommendation tonight as to A, B, C, D, E, F, G, which one we prefer to see changes to?
Yeah, if we could, I think there are thoughts where if you could get maybe two preferred options for, for each of the 16, that, that, that'd be great, yeah.
Okay, so it is action, not informational, okay?
Yes.
So should we go down each and every one of them and just?
Yes.
Give Nestor our feedback?
Did we want to do public, were we supposed to do public comments?
No, I'm sorry, of course, yes.
Do public comment first and?
Looks like we have two members of the public that are joining us from the Zoom meeting today. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen. We'll give you a few moments to do that if you would like to make any comment on this.
There anybody?
No, we did not, did not see anybody that would like to speak on this.
So. A Nestor, I, I, I would recommend or suggest that possibly we go back to number one.
Yep.
And then we look at what's existing and we get feedback on each one.
Here, here's the existing one for, for cover page, the first one.
Thank you.
Excuse me, oh.
Do you want to walk us through it then?
I'm sure, so this is, this is the existing image from, from the cover page. And, and.
If you could show us A, B, C, D, and E and we'll take some kind.
Sure, that works perfect, yeah. So we'll just go through the, through them. Here's proposed image A. Here's proposed image B. Here's proposed image C. Here's proposed image D. Proposed image E. And proposed image F.
Two of our.
Commissioner, quick.
Yes, Commissioner Wong, please.
Yes, so Nestor, question for you. In the beginning, you mentioned that the original picture presented in the MSASP documents might have been limiting and that we wanted to have different descriptions or alternative pictures to, so that the applicant or developer could have additional ideas. So. Why not just include all the different pictures as design ideas or have it in the appendix, all of these? Or, or maybe what we might do is just have a little description describing what works and what doesn't work. So for example, if the first picture, are we saying the first existing picture doesn't work for us? That we'd rather have the other ones, pictures preferred than have a little description why this one doesn't work or why these other ones work better. Would that help the developer or help the guidance for that or what's your?
I think, I think that's kind of how, what we're trying to get at through this, this exercise specifically. Kind of seeing that other pictures that staff feels are more, are more kind of in line with Millbrae's vision and the MSASP vision. And kind of getting your thoughts on which ones out of the ones that are, the pool of the ones that we have, which ones you, as a planning commission, believes kind of fit, fits that mold best.
I, I could add to that, commissioners, so this, this, the first picture is a very prominent picture. It occupies the front page and, and I think the commission should ask themselves and have a discussion about, is this particular development a good example of what we would like to see in future developments? And, you know, it could be that, you know, this isn't exactly what we're looking for. There are other examples that might help give an illustration of really what we're looking for. So that staff can say, you know, here's what we're looking for. We can point to this picture and this is, this is exactly, you know, what vision is for Millbrae. And so, you know, there, there's different examples, all the examples have their, their pros and cons. Some have a little bit more of a Spanish Mediterranean style, some a little bit more contemporary. But this is really an opportunity to, to choose a picture that would have a prominent place in the MSASP in the front cover.
Any other commissioners have any comments?
Can I ask a question to the other commissioners? Is that okay?
Sure.
I mean, I, I went through and I checked my favorites. Could we just do a poll on each one and see if, if the consensus starts to emerge? I mean, could we just keep a spreadsheet? And just like, sort of quick? Do some of you resonate more with that than others? We don't have to talk about six pictures individually times five commissioners?
Yeah.
We're going to be here until Thursday. I mean, my, my response is looking at the whole of each pitch, I don't know, that's a good question. But, you know, when I look at the goal of the picture, these are just illustrations in the MSASP. We're not looking to rewrite the entire book. We're looking to replace some of the images to make it better. So that when an applicant flips through it and says, what am I supposed to do here? I need some inspiration. Oh, okay. I get a feel for the kinds of things that Millbrae is looking for. No one project does it. We don't want a duplicate of anything we see here necessarily. They're just illustrations. So, I mean, did anybody else do what I did? Just?
No.
No, you didn't have any favorites at all in any category?
So, one more thing, Mr. Maltzer, so you're saying that we should pick a couple of them on each question so that they could be presented for, to the council for decisions, is that correct?
That's correct. I would suggest that if, if a commissioner has a particular opinion on a picture like this one, for example, say, I think image A should be, we should replace the existing image on the front cover with image A. And then we could have like a consensus, either nod, just a general feeling, or if somebody has a strong says no, I think B is probably better. And we can have that discussion, but probably what will be best if commissioner makes a recommendation. And, and we'd probably want one or two so that when you take us to the city council, we can say, these are the two that the commission preferred and let them have their, provide us feedback from that.
Okay, so how about this? I'm just, just a proposal, if I may, Chair. He goes through each question and say, A, does anybody have, you know, does anybody like it? And then they see how many hands that goes up out of the five of us. For each question, for each category that he wants a replacement photo of, the top, the top two gets to be picked with the most vote. I guess each one of us can vote twice in each question, up to twice, right? And that whoever gets the most, whichever picture gets the most vote gets to be recommended in front of the council. Make it easy. Let's spend half an hour doing this and be done with it.
Well, it'd probably take a little bit more than a half hour, but. Pointlessly, I think it'd be nice to have the existing and the other ones all in a row rather than the way it's presented like this. Am I the only one that feels that way?
I don't care.
I don't think we can do that, given the format of the presentation, but do you have your printout of the packet? Because you could put them all side by side for yourself.
Yeah, I took the pages apart.
No, unfortunately, in this particular situation, I did not print all these pages. I apologize. I was, like I said, a little overwhelmed with it. So many options. I pretty much liked them all. And I really felt that depending on what spot comes before us. And Maureen, I think you were there when we did Pendera.
Nope, sorry, wasn't there.
I wasn't even there, yeah.
Okay, so it must have been just before you and we wanted them to have a larger footprint, but they couldn't put it together. And these are all big projects. And everyone has to collect, every developer has to collect a certain amount of parcels in order to put something like this together. So I liked them all. So I, please go ahead and I will do my best. That's all I can say.
I have one more comment before we start. So I think that a lot of these design comments really, I guess, get across a key idea or theme that the planning department is suggesting. Such as like for parking, then they suggest, you know, not open outdoor parking, but covered parking. So all the alternatives are covered parking. And then like the walkable retail areas, they all show wider streets. So basically, a lot of the ideas, a lot of the pictures that were selected kind of get across those ideas that the planning department was, I guess, proposing. So I'm, I'm fine with that, finally taking a vote. It might be good just to ask if there's any simple, like one statement or two statement comments at the end of each section so that we could just add some clarification or what we're trying to get after. If anybody has a comment or at the end, just say a couple brief, brief statement about.
Am I the only one that did not print both these out?
I printed them.
Everybody did except me.
Printed like four to a page. So I'll propose we just start and just go with Maureen and Andrew's suggestion, just vote on a couple or if, yeah. Yeah, or unless we want to mail in our votes and mark it up and send it back.
Can we just start? Let's go, let's start.
Can we just start? Let's go. Let's start.
Yeah. If someone can just make a recommendation for two images and we can just take it from there.
Sure. Let's go with the first one first.
All right, Maureen, you've done it.
A and C.
For number one?
Yeah.
Can we go?
I'll do A and I'll do A and B.
Can we look?
I have A and D.
I had A and E. So A seems to be.
One of the winners.
Sounds like A.
Maybe Catherine has a time breaker to choose from.
So.
I can't believe that we're doing it this way and I didn't do my homework. Apologies. Which one is this one?
This is A.
The first one.
So everyone likes that one. And then that B.
Believe this one got a vote as well.
One vote?
I I voted A and B.
This is C. I don't think, did anyone vote for C? I think someone did.
I think Mr. Davis.
This one?
I think, yeah, I think Ms. Davis did.
Well, I don't want to vote for the ones we already have in town because
this isn't about approving a project or loving it in its entirety. It's just an illustration on the cover of the book.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just give us your feedback, Ms. Quig.
Well, since we all like A, can we just say A and just?
You don't, you don't, you don't have, you don't even have to vote for two. You can just vote for one.
Chair Quig, if I may, we'd like to get one or two. If one is the consensus, then that's fine. We can just move on.
Well, okay. What were we, what were the votes? How many? Another letter that at least two people chose.
I counted four for A and I'm not sure if B got two votes or just one.
One.
Just one.
Everything else got one.
Yeah, I think C and D all got one as well, correct?
Okay, so show me the ones that got one vote.
And I'll. B got one vote.
Okay.
I believe C did as well, one vote. And I'm not sure if I heard D as well for one vote or not.
Okay, I'll go with B. My second vote is B as in boy.
B. Yeah. So we have A and B for the first one. Moving along to our second image, a network of public open spaces. Here's the existing image, this first one. This proposed A. B. C. And D.
I'll go. I'll vote A and B.
A and B.
A and B for me too.
A and C.
I'm A and C.
B and D. That's fine. We're just tallying the votes.
Yep, and then the staff can take it from there.
Okay.
That's A and B.
A and B, yeah.
I don't thought it was A and C.
Good, because Commissioner Wong said B as well, so.
Yeah, I got three votes for B. This next one, building step back. This is the third image. Here's the existing one. And then here's the proposed ones. Here's A. B. C. D. And that's it for this one. Yeah, A, B, C, and D.
I have B and C.
A and C.
I'm fine with anything except D. So I was like A, B, or C.
I got A and B because I think it's a better illustration of, you know, with the building actually next to it and and show it how respectful that it tries to be. C is just basically a twin building. It doesn't show me how one building built before the other and setting back respecting the other building. That's why I chose what I chose. Although it was a very nice design.
Yeah, they're all nice.
Again, they all pretty much convey the design idea of having a step back, so.
Yeah, but I think, you know, the key, the key consideration here is that you're designing a building that is next to some existing building and how you step back would create a coherent with the building next to you. So being able to illustrate that is the purpose of this photo.
Okay.
Which one is this one you have up now?
This is B.
Yeah, this is number B. Whereas number C seems almost like two brand new building going up together that looks exactly alike, so. Although it was a very nice design, that's not the purpose of this photo.
Okay, I'll go A, B as well then.
I'll go along with A and B.
A and B. Sorry, so it sounds like the winners, yeah, A and B. Moving along to number four, landscaping with drought tolerant plants. Here's the existing image. And then proposed A. Proposed B. Proposed C. And I think that's it for this one. Yeah, A, B, and C.
If I may, I'll go for A and B.
A and B.
A and C.
I'm sorry, I can't get that last one?
A, C.
Can I propose, could we get like city hall? I like city halls, a picture of city hall in the front, the landscaping. Maybe add that. I like A or B. I like A better, but could we maybe do something like that, like add something in our city hall photo?
You do A and C hall?
Yeah. Because we said private and public entities.
I.
Jean, that's that's option M.
I don't.
That's not on the menu.
Well, they said it was on there. We can do, because there are only three choices here and I'm like.
It might be an answer to a couple other ones that you need to go find some other pictures too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. I like the out of the box thinking.
Okay, I like B, I like a walking path through there. I don't like a mosquito breeding ground that has a bunch of ponding. And actually, I like it even if it's more integrated with the building so that there's some of this in each, in front of each front or surrounding each building. Instead of one massive area that's like some small area.
I like A. But I I think I do agree with Jean that I kind of like city hall better than B and C.
And then you get to see it near the building, so I don't know.
So maybe A and then I'll look for one for city hall as well.
Nice.
Number five, accommodate an appropriate amount of vehicle parking. That's existing image in Milbury Station. And then these are the proposed ones. Excuse me, A. B. And C.
A and C.
A and C.
A.
A, B.
A, B.
I'll go A, B as well.
A, B. Like A and B for that one. On to number six, street based frontage standards. This is the existing image. And then we'll go through the proposed ones. Here's A. B. C. And D.
A and B.
A and B.
Can I make a comment, though? I A and B are both Birmingham. Clearly Birmingham. I kind of feel like it's sad that we have to resort to Birmingham photos for our MSASP book. And if we're going to put one as an example, that's fine, but I kind of prefer to not do it. Or maybe it's just that because I used to work in Birmingham, so it's very familiar to me, but it's like oh, we got two Birmingham, so that's.
I'd second that.
A comment that I would make.
And you even have their new ground. I mean, their their new pavement.
Lovely, but I just.
Jean, how about D? Where did D come from?
Yeah, there's no D. I didn't see a D.
Yeah, yeah, this one.
That's an E.
E.
That was a typo. That's supposed to be D. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, doesn't matter.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, we can call this. We, it doesn't have to be alphabetical. So B, B and E, at least on my piece of paper.
I like A and B. E looks like Disneyland. Doesn't even look like real.
Well, I like that Disneyland.
Yeah, people like Disneyland.
I know. You know, I expect a character to walk by. Where's Mickey?
I like either A or B. And then can I make another suggestion? We have in on Broadway, right near like the parklets and things like that, the the wide sidewalk that was done right in front of Milbury Square. Can we not do that? Because it has a parklet. I mean, we put a lot of work into that and I think it looks nice. So instead of, I don't know, I just really don't like the fact that we're going to put in two Birmingham pictures into our Milbury MSASP. And not that thrilled with C because it looks really rundown. Yeah. Not really what we're looking for. And then E, I do, I do feel like it is a little bit Disney. It doesn't feel like Milbury, so that would be my suggestion.
I would really hope that Milbury can be like that, wide open areas where outdoor dining and places where people can be outside or walk, it's walkable.
In the wind in Milbury.
Yeah, if we could shelter, yeah, to design it to shelter the wind, design your buildings in the right way.
I feel like we have a rendering of when that Milbury, you know, Broadway was kind of expanded out, that we stretched it out and that was being proposed. And there's a little parklet and benches and seating and planters and all of that. If we could get a photo of that.
Yeah, we don't have tremendous space, but what we hope, I mean, what I'd hope to see is like European walkable city with the streets and interests and centerpieces like fountains. Dave kind of fixed that description. Okay, just my two cents.
Um, I go ahead.
Go ahead, Nestor.
Oh, no, I was just going to say I have, I think I have a tiebreaker between A and B are tied. I don't know what the preference is between these two.
We also have on the table the Broadway example. I think there's a rendering out there too. And one other option is that we, the commission could say none of these images work and that we could go back and then take a look at other images as well. So please don't feel confined to these options.
I.
Oh, if I may, so if that's the case, then I would prefer to see something a little bit more substantial where you get active storefront wide sidewalk. So the Birmingham part of it stocks. You know, it's a good start, although I like to see a little bit more volume on top. If you can find something that is a little bit more modern. And with an active storefront like 15, 16 foot ceiling with you know, maybe 15, 20 feet sidewalk and then on top of that, a few stories.
We might even have a rendering for like Sarah Station because Sarah Station had, I think, on Victoria or whichever street that was, they had a rendering of the sidewalk with an activated front. I mean, first floor and, you know, people kind of mingling and things like that. So I just.
Well, both, both of those two TODs had some.
Yeah, with 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 trees and some benches on the outside.
Yeah. They have 15 foot high storefronts. I won't be able to shop there, Anders.
What time, what time?
If they have 15 foot high storefronts, it's going to be high rents. I won't be able to shop there.
Oh.
Just kidding.
It's, it sounds like for this one, we'll kind of come back with a with a couple more examples.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can do better.
Yeah, sure. The next one is number seven, usable open space, publicly accessible open space. This is the existing image. And then proposed image A. B. C. And E.
A and C.
I agree.
A and C, that's two for each one.
C and D.
Maureen?
I already voted A and C.
I said, you know, C is blurry, the bottom is blurry.
I think that's meant to show active.
Is it, is that meant, is that intentional?
Yeah, those kids are playing and stuff. Yeah.
They're running really fast.
Okay.
A and C.
Or on seven. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, A and C is extremely similar in that it's got this, you know.
It's, I believe it's the same development, actually.
Yeah, I think so. They're extremely similar. I think they might even be the same location.
Yeah, it's in, it's somewhere in Georgia. I forget where. Yeah.
At Avalon, it says. So I like A, but you know, having two pictures of the same location may not help. So, but I think number B is also good because you're having, you know, sort of a promenade, if you will, right? Looking like design here. I kind of like that. And similar to what E is trying to convey as well. Although it's kind of more of a overhead view, so it doesn't have the same feeling of it. But it certainly does convey the message of having more like a, you know, promenade pedestrian exclusive between the two commercial buildings. So B and E sort of conveyed the same thing. A and C sort of conveyed a different message where it's in sort of an open space for leisure rather than for shopping. But B and E is the same concept.
If you look at the purpose of the image is to convey open space suitable or usable by both residents and visitors, the ones where people are just walking through don't feel usable. They're nice promenades, but I don't feel like a visitor would have anything to do there except walk by and pop in somewhere. The two ones are similar, but there'll probably only be one illustration in the end. It was a reason that you would come and hang out. The other ones, everybody's just walking on by. There's nowhere, nothing to do. If we're trying to convey open space, you know, then that's, that's why I said those two.
I see. Conveyed open space useful by both residents and visitors.
And one thing to keep in mind too is that some of these proposed open spaces are very broad and wide, which we don't have a lot of space in Milbury. So like the one E is enormously wide space that developers probably wouldn't go for, we space we wouldn't have. And so a lot of these pictures show kind of modern urban design. Again, I look again to like European city design that's walkable, outdoor areas. Really designed well for limited transportation and cars. But anyways, that's just. Now, there's a, like in Russia, St. Petersburg, the Peter the Great, he went to places like canals in Venice and then he just got ideas and modeled all of St. Petersburg after some of these European cities. That'd be spectacular. I mean, spectacular. I mean, I don't know if we can build a European city in Milbury, but.
I don't think so.
Some of those ideas, concepts would be good.
I will also vote for C. And then, um, I will put in a request of, because we have like, uh, for the gateway develop, we have renderings of like a little seating and shopping and the statues that people can walk around and play and take pictures. If, if, it doesn't have to come back here, but to us, but I would just propose something like that might be nice, that, the rendering that they had to. Because the, the B is kind of what I'm saying, but like Commissioner Davis said, it just looks like people walking through. It doesn't really look like someplace you can enjoy. Whereas what we had, um, in the proposal for the gateway, I think, and for Sarah, um, are sections where people can actually hang out and little nice benches and some kind of statue that children can play with and water features and all of that. I feel we have those.
Actually, actually, Jean, uh, for picture E, they're actually outdoor seating table with umbrellas. And then there is a sort of a fountain in the middle of it, right?
I just don't like.
Exactly what you.
Yeah, yeah. I don't like the tree because it feels really messy and it doesn't look as nice and green and.
Okay, okay. So it's a present, so it's a presentation issue, not so much of the.
The concept, yeah. So I think if there were this concept.
I think the concept was noble, because if you look at it closely, right, there is, um,
Agreed.
You know, there's, there's outdoor markets.
Yep.
Shopping cart, I mean, not shopping cart, I mean, like, uh, you know, sort of a small, little vendor selling, yeah, selling groceries and people are gathering with, you know, tables. So it seems like it might be an outdoor restaurant in here somewhere.
Yep.
And then there is a fountain towards the end of the promenade, which, you know, I think it's a very nicely designed outdoor promenade.
I like.
I, I, I didn't say A is not good. A is good as well, but it's, it's limited to just sort of a leisure. People just sit around and have zipping coffee. Um, I guess, you know, just different planning and purpose of that quote unquote, open space. That's all.
If they could do this at 1100 Okamino Rio.
I can see this working. It's compressed because the building, space between the buildings would be compressed. We don't have a lot of space in Milbury. But like Jane said, I think one thing to keep in mind for all these TOD projects is that really want to tie in, I think recycled water from the wastewater plant and have really lush greenery around or integrated. So you don't just have one big open space or one big swell area, but we want to like merge them so that.
That's my.
Roll environment.
That's my whole thing. I'm sorry.
And, and I'm bringing up the developments because we have them already. And so I just thought that might be easier than trying to look around in cities to find something that suited to us. But since there were a lot of renderings that we saw, maybe if we can take some of those and that'll save some time too. And.
Just from counting votes, it sounds like, uh, C has four votes. So maybe that one, and then look for another example of, of one of the local, um, developments gateway or, or Sarah Station or one of those. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
I agree.
Right, on to our next one.
All right.
The chapter six cover page. Uh, this, this is the existing one. And then, uh, proposed image A. Excuse me. B. C. D. E. F. And then a couple very modern examples, uh, G and I believe one more H. Yeah. C and D.
C and D.
D as in dog.
I could do C and D.
C and D.
T as in dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do C and D too.
I'm good with D. I thought D is a little similar, so that's why I was thinking maybe E, just because it has a little more different flavor to it. But I'm. C is okay too. So I prefer D and E, I guess.
I kind of liked A and E. I could live with D. I didn't like C at all. So, there you go.
Because.
I, I, it just, it doesn't show me anything. It's dark. Just the image doesn't, doesn't speak to me at all. And I don't, I don't know what it's, what design standards it's living up to. It just did nothing for me.
So, uh, Commissioner Davis, was that, was your vote A and, uh, D or E?
I said A and E, actually, but I can live with D. So, you know.
It sounds like for this one, uh, most votes is D and then, uh, C.
This one's a little interesting. Most of them are multifamily and, um, the, the last two are a little bit more modern, but I think those are more, um, appropriate for office designs. So, oh, actually, maybe not that one, the last one.
This one. Yeah.
And, um, you know, given that this is in the MSASP and we do still have areas that are, um, underdeveloped. And we do get some potential office tenants, what type of design in terms of, uh, office buildings with a commission.
Where did you get this one from? Nester, where?
I mean, it was, it was. Al Shamada building?
It's, um, what, what's that, what's the name of the arch, it was an architecture for, for.
It was an architecture.
Silicon Valley. Yeah.
It's beautiful looking building. It's just, I don't know how.
Looks like maybe designed by, after a computer chip or some type of component.
It looks, it, it looks like a NAS. It looks like a, a big hard drive. External hard drive. Anyway.
Okay. So it sounds like for that one, it's, uh, D and C for this one. Moving on to number nine, um, gateway design. That's the existing. And then proposed A.
Birmingham.
Like four of them are.
Birmingham.
One.
Birmingham.
One's Sematary.
Sematary.
Strix, Strix.
Believe that's it. Yeah.
Um. We get better example on this one.
Yeah.
F and D.
I would, I don't like any of them that much.
Yeah, me neither. I, I think we need better example.
So maybe for this one, come back to it.
Yeah, you might want to consider, um, Sarah, I think has a, they had a nice corner between, um, all my streets are failing me, but on the north side of the Sarah development, they had a little corner and then they have a wing sign or something. I don't know. That looked kind of interesting. I don't know.
Alright, so, um, we'll come back with, with, uh, examples for this one.
Ten.
Ten. Building articulation and massing. That's the existing image. Proposed A. E. C. D. E. F. G. H. And I. Any of these are very massive, like big giant bulky, you know, E, F, G, H, very rectangular, squareish. Although F and H break up the bottom a little bit.
A and E.
Same. Same for me, A and E. I think A is good because it's kind of a small one, a smaller building. And then E is it doesn't feel as massive, like, like Commissioner Wong was saying, I think. The F, G and H look really big, even though they have the articulation.
I'm okay with A and E also.
I'll say E and F, trees, trees, buffer, bigger sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll do E. I like E. Yeah, I can do F as well. The tree's a good thing.
Uh, so it sounds like for that one, it is E and A.
Okay. Get moving.
And A has some trees too.
Uh, number 11, it's window arrangement. Here's the existing. Proposed A. B. C. And D. That's it. Yeah.
Sorry, not a big fan of the, any one of them.
I could go A and D.
Same here.
You should have a second please. I'm sorry.
A.
Please.
He's asking to show him again.
Oh, sorry.
And D.
A and C.
A and C. I will skip.
Maybe A, but none of the others I can.
So maybe this would be a good one to bring back too, because it seems like nobody.
Well, I mean, I, I like to see like, you know, I think some of the modern buildings should really have, you know, large windows that sort of projected out of the building like a, like a bay window type thing. That will sort of give you the architectural details. I think the original picture was actually better than any of the ones that is currently being proposed.
I think that, like, um, going back to our developments, how about like the Veterans Building, Veterans Preferred Building? I think the back of that had some window like alternating or something that, that looked a little bit different. Maybe this is one to, to try a few. Try, I mean, to try something else though, rather than.
So maybe another one that we can get, we, we'll go and look back for, for, for more examples. Yeah, yeah. Right, then number 12, um, sustainable building design. That's the existing. And then, uh, proposed A. Proposed B. Proposed C. And, uh, proposed D.
Wait a minute. Sunlight access should be taken into consideration for location of the building. And the original picture shows a bunch of really tall glass and building design to maximize solar access. I fail to see how some of those pictures has.
Say, say D, what is?
Sort of, sort of articulated out. I mean, it's got a bunch of solar panels, but.
Where's the panels on this one? D.
No. But it's not so much of sunlight access. It's not, it's not such way that you, you're designing the building so that it take into like self facing, for example, so you can capture the maximum amount of sunlight through the windows and, and have natural light bring into the building so that you can bring the warmth and and be energy efficient and all that. All, all I'm seeing is just a bunch of solar panels on the roof.
I think that's the main idea. So for these sections, though, they just get across that we'd like solar panels. They should encourage them to use solar panels in their facilities.
Right, then, then, then it's not the same as to say, pick a photo that illustrate sunlight access should be taken into account and consideration for the location of the building.
I don't know how you could show that in a photo, though.
I think B and C might be good representations. So, I mean, then obviously the developers are getting a couple of their own ideas or have their thoughts. But these are just examples to guide them that, yes, we should encourage them to use solar panels.
Um, I, I, I think I'm agreeing with Anders. The, the real point of this section is solar access. Unless it's she wants sustainability, but I think solar panels are like a given. I don't think we need to illustrate them. If we want homes or offices to have the right kind of light so that people, you know, have natural light and feel trapped.
Yeah.
You know, feel warm and cozy or energetic at work, whatever it is. If it's about solar access, then you just need a fabulous set of windows. And I'm not sure any of these pictures do that.
Especially B, because I didn't even see a window.
B is just dump it. It's just, we don't, I mean, yeah, please bring solar panels.
No solar panel, yeah.
Yeah, they don't need a picture of that. They know that. It's going to be somewhere in there. So.
All, all you need is a legislation that says solar panel.
We'll have solar panels. Okay.
So maybe for this one, look for more examples, uh, bigger windows, solar access, that sort of stuff.
Something that shows that that due consideration is given to as much of the building as possible to bring in light. I know that's asking a lot, but.
Yeah.
You can show.
I thought C was the best of the bunch.
And I can't see the middle or the sides of the inside. I don't know who's getting light for where.
So, so I'll put it this way, Kathy, if I, if I may, if you just look at this building, look at this picture of this building. And I don't tell you what the headline is. Do you know what this picture means to you?
You know, now that I'm looking at, I'm looking at all those like balconies and they're not getting any light inside at all.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, there's, so here you go. That's, you know. Whereas if you were to be able to show, for example, um, a building with a pitch roof, you know, like, you know, one sided pitch roof with
I guess they're looking.
20 feet, 20 feet, 20 feet glass wall, then you can really see, oh, wow, you know, then you're really capturing a lot of light into the interior space through this huge windows, you know, a lot of transom windows, for example.
Yeah, I guess they're just trying to illustrate the solar panels at the end.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to tell people that you need solar panel on the roof, then you just, all you need is a few lines of text.
Okay, so we'll come back to this one with, uh, more examples.
Thank you. 13.
13, uh, vehicle driveway design. This is the existing one. Excuse me. And, uh, proposed A. Proposed B. And proposed C. I think, yeah, that's it for this one. It's three.
B.
I'm good with B or C. A doesn't show, it'll be a killer access for me.
There's actually on the right hand side, a little.
Yeah, it's not very.
Little rolled up, little door.
Yeah.
There with an alleyway access. I think the best demonstration of that is picture C. Um, even B doesn't show you exactly which one is Abysia Street, quite frankly. Well, neither does C, actually. It's the only street that you show.
Because it's not even, yeah, you can't even tell where Okamino might be.
You know, uh, for lack of, yeah. The only way that really clearly shows, well, it's not even clear either, that shows that the busiest street gets the store. Well, you didn't even have storefront neither. Yeah, it's, it's. Not exactly a great illustrations of the intent. I mean, none of these photos really help you illustrate the intent of these photos. I mean, none of these photos really help you illustrate the intent of these photos.
Could there be something?
In fact, the original photo might be better.
The original photo is pretty bad.
I, I know. They should zoom out a little bit so that you can see the BC Street that, that has the storefront, whereas the quiet street has the vehicular driveway. They should zoom out that a little bit, but instead they focus so much on the driveway and the garage door that they sort of missed the point, you know?
I, I think in this case, where's the, I mean, purpose of the image vehicular is not on the main street. I mean, I, I think they'll get it from this picture. Those, oh yeah, there's the driveway. There's the garage over there. I don't think this is a really complicated concept for people to understand, so like, C would probably get the job done.
Yeah, they probably.
We don't want to make them go back and find five more pictures of all of these categories.
Then use A, because A shows clearly that there's a tiny little alleyway where the vehicular access would be.
Why don't you go back to A? Is this A?
I, I didn't even know what A is. A is an ugly picture.
I don't like.
I know that. I know it's an ugly picture and I don't like it either, but.
Right.
But it, it's, it's the best picture that depicts the purpose that you're trying to illustrate.
I can't, I don't see that myself, but.
Okay, all right, that's okay.
I don't see it.
Come back with more of that.
I think, or B has like cars on, you know, the right side is El Camino, so at least it shows some cars. And I think like Commissioner Davis said, it's, the wording is there, and so we can just say this is what the side street example would look like, so. Maybe if we can do that, I. B would be good.
Fine.
Did we get other commissioners?
I think you guys covered it. Agree with everything.
It sounds like B then. Number 14, onsite landscaping, that's the existing. And then proposed A. B. C. And D.
I'll go for B and C.
I'll go with A and B. Because I think that's good to limit the amount of median way, because there's a lot more cleanup and maintenance and potential for, I don't know, listed activities going on.
B's a beautiful picture. None of them are bad, but when I look at the, the purpose of the image, I think we're trying to do too much, and that's why I can't figure out if these images even work. To define a development spatial organization, add aesthetically pleasing element, and create entry points. I started looking for all those things everywhere. I went, nah, I don't know. So we may be trying to do too much, but I like B. I think I do see entry points. I do see aesthetically pleasing. I don't know about organization, but I'm not sure any of these really show organization, so I'm just dropping that one. So I like B.
I'm fine with B.
The only thing about the one with the little dog thing is kind of cute because.
It's a dog?
It requires a lot of that now.
Who's the dog?
The green patch there is probably a dog thing.
This one.
Dog run?
I believe so, yeah.
I don't know.
Oh, what did you say, Catherine?
I, I, I think that's like a dog run, isn't it?
And do you like that or no?
Well. If we're gonna have large buildings and people are in apartments, I think it's very important to have. No, it's not something I would like. I'm just thinking of visually showing people that in these buildings, we need to think about something like that. I, I, I'd like, go back. I thought I'd liked, I can go with B.
Hey, sounds like B for that one.
Yeah, A was not real good.
All right, onto number 15, fixed bus service. And that's the existing one, and then proposed A. Proposed B. And proposed C.
I had a question on this one. Was this, so this is specific to El Camino real?
I think the, I think the purpose of that one, I think that, I think that language came from the MSASB, the specific one, and it was like the caption for it, if I remember right.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily have to be El Camino that we're thinking.
No, not for this one. I don't, not for the replacement image, no.
The existing image is not very nice. I think I like A and B, certainly not C. And maybe A might be good because we don't have a lot of space. Even the El Camino doesn't have a lot of space, which is the only place along the El Camino where this is going to become important. Because that's going to be our only bus route.
A and B.
I'd go with A. I don't like the others.
A.
A is fine.
Sounds like A for this one. And then number 16, transportation demand management, TDM. That's the existing image, is the parking lot. And then proposed A. Proposed B.
Then you're, sorry, but then you're trying to show alternate modes of transit?
That's correct, yeah.
So how does the original photo show modes of, alternate modes of transit? I mean, you see a parking lot.
That's why we're replacing.
That's where we're getting the other ones, hopefully.
There are different types of cars there.
Let me rephrase. So your goal to pick a photo that shows more than one mode of transit?
Yeah, so, so we're picking, we're picking a photo that shows kind of transportation demand management, which is the, the section that this photo's in. Meaning, yeah, different, different modes of transit, yeah.
I like either A or D. It has a little bit of bark, a little bit of people walking, car. Bicycle.
I think A is problematic because there's a car going right next to all the people and the bicycles.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's what we want to, yeah, it's kind of weird.
I think another picture that might capture it better is like if you have bike lanes or bike.
Oh, wait, 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 Commissioner Wong, I think, you know, we might have misunderstood that, because if you look at picture eight again, that is actually the curb.
Yeah.
So it's like, it's like a drop off. So it's like a drop off. You see that? Oh, for park.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a drop off, right? So, so it's okay to have automobile in that location where, you know, there's bike access as well, although I like to see a little bit more structured bike lane rather than biking right into someone else. I mean, I see kids walking in front of the bike and this seems like a, it seems like a bit of a chaos there.
It is.
Then maybe D, because D has a little more structure.
If you had D with a bike, that'd be great.
If you can find, now, just a suggestion, if you can find a picture that has automobile lane and clearly defined bike lane with markings on the ground, and I think you should be able to find pictures like that. Then that would be a much better illustration. What do you all think?
Yes. I think one thing to keep, you know, is that in, go back to European city, and some of these European cities like Copenhagen, they've got bike parking that are just long strands of rows and rows of bikes. And so it'd be good if there's like pictures of how all this is organized, if people were to use bikes.
I mean, if we're, all we gotta do is just illustrate a clear demarcation on the bike lane on the road. Instead of number D, you know, it does show that the bike and automobile sharing the road, although it seems like they are sharing the same piece of road. I like to see them being separated so that there's a clear demarcation of a bike lane so that, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You should be able to find a photo like that. There's, there are all kinds of that in the Bay Area.
And it could show the bus at the same time and maybe even.
Us, yeah, possibly you can show the bus nearby as well.
Might find something with the, again, the gateway, because there's the bus drop off that circles around bikes, Bart. You know, so there might be some things where you can get.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe this one and image A are from the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it is, looks like it is.
We can.
Yeah, a better rendering, because it, it isn't clear on here.
It is, it is a bit chaotic.
Transportation demand management. Are we overthinking this?
No.
I mean. Well, just reread it again. Okay, purpose of the image on page 60, show alternate modes of transit.
I see two modes in A and D.
Obviously, the original photo hardly shows it. It shows, you know, it shows a couple of big parking lots behind the Japanese restaurant. But, yeah, A is hardly a good photo. It shows chaotic. It shows the biker almost running to the guy. Second photo shows a cow train station with someone ready to get on with a bike. Picture three shows a couple of cow trains on our own Millbrae Station. Number four is as close as it gets, and, and what I'm hoping is number four photo that where the biker is clearly biking on a designated bike lane that is separated from the vehicular portion of the road. And I think you should be able to find that.
Or consensus is to.
I, I don't know how I would feel about it. That's just how I felt. I don't mean to represent the entire commission on that statement.
I like D, except that it doesn't mention, I don't see that, you know, trains are this way or anything like that, so it's just.
Oh.
A reminder that we have those huge ones and the airport isn't anywhere in there. So if we're remembering the hub that the station area is, but I don't know. Just displaying every single logo of our transit organizations.
How about this, Maureen? We put a, we put a descending airplane in the middle of that D photo.
There you go, little, little plane in the background and somehow a, a train conductor maybe walking to work. I don't know.
I need a place to land my Cessna, so.
All right, I think we did enough for Mr. Malta tonight.
I think we did quite a bit, and I'm very pleased that we got as much done, and I once again apologize. I did not print it. I went like, oh my gosh. But if I had realized that I shouldn't have, I would.
I would have, I have to say though, when I was looking at the photos, I'm like, wow, that was in the MSASP, because we were, I mean, we got this big packet and had a few, couple days to look over it or something, so I didn't even notice the pictures. So as we're going through, I was like, oh, that's an ugly picture.
At all. I don't remember. I do not remember the pictures either. I mean, I looked at the pictures, but I didn't analyze them with a number that says transportation demand manager. I figured that part of it.
Yeah.
I think that Nestor did a good job pulling all these different concepts and representing them, so I think a lot of these pictures will represent that and get across the idea to developers what we're looking for. But again, in Millbrae, you know, we have really compressed space, so I'm thinking that if they can merge or they're somehow, they're gonna have to integrate these ideas together, like they may not have a big boulevard like this shown here on 16D, but love the, you know, foliage, greenery. You know, making sure it can accept recycled water and kind of open space feel. We need to integrate these different concepts together.
Yeah, once again, I, I look at the space available that we have. And unless some developer is able to accumulate a lot of little pieces. I love them. I love all of this. I, I just don't see how it could possibly happen when we're, especially are down. I think we're only about two miles long. Makes it a little difficult. But let's keep trying. Let's keep that vision so we know what we can be.
Yeah, Chair Quigg, if I may, really quickly before we adjourn here. It, it's really hard to find a photo that would depict something that has the mass that we're looking for, the scale, you know, with, with the right proportions and streets, stuff like that. But, you know, it's the best of our ability, whether we can get that, you know, we'll do the best. And also it's just that, the, the architecture too. I mean, it could be in the background, but it's also important to note that, you know, if it is in the background, is that type of architecture that we want to see?
No, I, I think you guys did a great job and it takes a lot of research to find all of that, so thank you. Okay, are, so I think I'm, I'm very pleased that we actually finished the whole thing. So it will go on to the next step. Are there any, any other comments on the study session? Because I think we're completed, but if somebody wants to say something. Nope. Commission comments. I don't see anybody's hand up. Announcements? Do we have any announcements, Roscoe?
I'm hoping we don't have any more rolling blackouts. I mean, we're, after the thunderstorm, we've had some of the people on my block is losing power.
Have we had some?
Some of my neighbors had their power out for at least a day or two. Bernadette, Bernadette had her two fingers up, so is it two hour or is it two days?
The rolling blackouts are only an hour or two. An actual power outage is a different thing.
Yeah, okay, maybe I misspoke. I think it's the actual power outage.
Yeah, Saturday, my power went out, and then I got the text that it was gonna go out. And then tonight, when I get home, I have a text that said, when I get home, it's gonna be dark. Hopefully it'll be on when I go home, but it started at three o'clock.
Now.
So I, I don't, I don't know if PGNU is listening on this, but probably not, but I think that's unacceptable. We gotta.
My friend that works for PGME, he's a, you know, a smart, like, woo-hoo guy, and he's like, he, I posted that. He says, it's not PGME, it's that CIA SO or whatever it is. He's like, don't blame PGME. I'm like, all right, dude. All right, buddy.
I, I've been Millbrae and I have not had any issues at all, has any.
You're higher up on the hill, right?
No.
Oh, no?
I'm only six blocks from El Camino.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very close to El Camino, and I'm very close to San Bruno. I'm right next to Cappuccino High School.
Oh, oh, maybe that's why. Well, it's not like the school's open or anything.
Oh, I don't, I don't know if we're on some kind of.
Air grid, yeah.
I don't know, because we're, we're very fortunate, but anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, no commission comments, announce.
Just one more comment, I guess, so. I guess just a sign of the times, we're still in the middle of COVID. Obviously, we're doing the Zoom meetings, so I hope everyone's safe and using good practices. School's starting soon end of August for the first day of school on the Millbrae school calendar, so hope everyone could be safe and hope everyone makes the best of our times and good, good luck with that. And then also elections are coming up, so everyone, hope everyone can start to get involved and help the community and look at all the things to vote on and candidates and so forth. Good luck to everybody.
The next meeting, September 7th, that's Labor Day, so are we looking at going to Tuesday or do we cancel?
Roscoe, what are we doing that week? I can't, I, I've kind of lost track of days, quite honestly, with all of this.
The the city council meets on Tuesday, so our scheduled meeting would be on September ninth.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay. Do we have anything that is looking like it might be here on?
Um, we we might have, we might have one, possibly two. Actually, we, yeah, actually, we will have more than likely have one item. And this is, so after the commission heard the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, we spoke with H C D, kind of got their feedback on our proposed ordinance, and they had some suggested edits. So the way the process works is that once the ordinance is adopted by the city, then the city has to send the ordinance to H C D for them to review and comment. We decided to send it to them in advance of a city council. That way we could make any changes before the city council. We didn't think that there was gonna be very much, but apparently their their interpretation of the code is slightly different. So we have a few minor edits that we're gonna take back to the planning commission and we're gonna do that, looks like on the ninth.
Okay. Who's A C D?
Uh, H C D, Housing and Community Development.
Got it. Okay, so we're gonna see that on the ninth.
Yes.
Okay, when are we looking at eleven hundred El Camino again?
Uh, so that project, we uh, let's see, so we're going through in the environmental review process now and we're taking that to a study session with the city council on the eighth. So so the night before the planning commission. And then there's still a few things that we have to iron out in terms of the procedure, the entitlement procedure. And then, you know, once we, once we work that out, then we can take it back, but I'm not sure yet how long that's gonna take.
Thank you. Are we adjouring? Anything else? We are adjourning the meeting of August the seventeenth. That, I don't know what time it is.
Nine thirty five. Nine thirty six.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Hi. Hi, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you all.
You had a lot going on tonight. Thank you. Good night.
Night. Matt, are you there?
No, I'm signing off.
Okay, yeah, you do.